Is now joining.
Okay, Tracy Wilson.
Great. Welcome to the June 8th Select Board Meeting for the Town of Barrington. We ask that you do your best to put your phones in quiet mode. And please, unless you're participating in public comment or are part of the Select Board Discussions, try and mute your microphones just because of background noise. Pursuant to RSA 91A Emergency Provisions of the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, we are participating in a remote meeting. It can be found at bit.ly/Barrsb200608. You can call 1-603-664-0240 to participate. And our conference ID is 135265637. Hashtag. If anyone has any problems throughout the meeting with their participation, please dial 6640146 or email administration@barrington.nuhampshire.gov. Pursuant to RSA 91A Public Hearings. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I need the rest of this. Please hold. As the Chair of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as the result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Providing public notice of the necessary information for assessing the meeting, we have previously given notice to the public of necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams. Instructions have also been provided on the town website. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Again, we've given you the number 6640146 and an email administration@barrington.nuhampshire.gov should you have trouble participating in the public comment section of the meeting. Adjourning this meeting would take place if for some reason the public was unable to access the meeting. So if something goes wrong with our Wi-Fi connectivity at some point, we would adjourn the meeting and likely try to re-join the meeting. But we've had no trouble with that, I think, now for about four meetings. Please note that all votes will be taken in roll call capacity along with attendance. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. Do I have select person air yet?
Yep.
Dan's waiting in the lobby.
Yep. Dan, can you hear us?
Okay.
I hear you.
Very good. There he is. Okay.
I see Rick.
I'm sorry?
I see the agenda.
Okay, very good. We're gonna move. Dan, we've already read the RSA 91A Emergency Provisions, and we're going to move right to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Beginning our meeting tonight, we have a public hearing for the issuance of a building permit at 254 Brooks Road for Melissa Simmons, map 11 lot 9. I've reviewed this packet. Has everyone else reviewed the packet?
I have reviewed the packet, and the only thing I see missing is the distance from the edge of the porch to the road on the drawing for the setback.
On the drawing, we're missing what select person, Bailey?
When you look at the setback from the edge of the proposed new porch to the edge of the road, that setback is missing off the drawings.
Okay.
You can see it right there.
Yep. Is John Huckins available? Has he reviewed this?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Are you comfortable that you've reviewed that setback?
I'm pretty sure on the application, it showed that dimension there even though it wasn't on the plan, but I can double check that before I issue the permit.
Okay. I'm just gonna double check. You think that it's listed somewhere in the packet?
The first page of the building permit application on the bottom left, it has setbacks from the front sides and rear labeled on the application.
Yeah.
That has to be signed up and have the plan before planning can sign off for me to issue the permit. And I'll just double check to make sure it's there. I thought it was, but maybe it wasn't.
No, it has the front at 270 feet, the right 300, the rear at 750 slash 250, and the left at 100.
Yeah, I know it was way back from the setbacks on the roads. Yeah.
Yep. There's a significant amount of distance there.
Okay.
I can't see that on Andy.
It's on, I'm looking at the minor building permit application. The third, well, so I have it from the planning board, so it's the third page in my planning board packet, but it would probably be, yep, okay, yeah, there it is.
Yep. So, select person Bailey, do you feel comfortable with that?
Well, as you know, with my time on the ZBA, there has been numerous times that the ZBA got impaled because they didn't have the distance. And so we've been looking at that, but if the rest of the board is satisfied with that, then I can go along with it, but it just means that even if it's not on the drawing, they could still extend the porch out there. But however the board wants to go on this, I've made my concerns known, so I'm not gonna worry about it.
John, is the porch existing on the front already?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are you comfortable then if the porch is currently existing?
Yeah, I mean, what I can do because of these things, I'll just have them on that drawing, label the distance on that drawing. But that was the existing certification and the septic design from when the house was originally done. They just kind of sketched on that the location of the new porch.
Gotcha.
Thanks, John. Appreciate John doing that.
Okay, so pending the completion of that measurement listed on the plan, is there any questions, concerns, issues regarding the building permit? And do we have any reference to the public hearing, any butters that wish to speak in reference to this? If you would like to speak in reference to this, I'll give it 15 to 20 seconds. Please send a quick, in your upper left-hand corner, you'll find chat. Please send a quick chat to our TA, MacGyver.
So if you're participating over the phone to unmute yourself, press star six. If you're participating on a computer, you should see a microphone icon that may have a line through it. You can select that, unmute yourself.
I'm gonna give it 10 more seconds, TA, MacGyver.
While you're waiting, Tracy, you can see what I have up on the screen, right?
Correct. That's perfect. Yep.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And I liked the highlight of that area. Okay. So seeing as there's no public comment on this, would a Select Board member like, oh, I'm gonna take you back. Could I please just have a roll call attendance and state who's in the room with you, please, beginning with select person air?
Air, 334 Old Kong Turnpike, I'm by myself. No one's influenced my vote.
Select person Bailey.
George Bailey, Chesley Drive, I'm in the room by myself, but not in the house.
Very good. Vice Chair Knapp.
Andrew Knapp, Lindsey Point Road, I am in the room by myself.
Jim?
Gotta unmute yourself, Jim.
James Sakosha, 21 James Henry Drive, I'm in the room with my dog.
Very good. And Tracy Hardikoff at 48 Stone Farm Road, I'm in the room alone, but not in the house alone. Thank you for doing that. Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the application for the building permit at 254 Brooks Road?
I'll make a motion to issue a building permit for map 211 lot 9.
Very good. Is there a second?
526.
Yep.
I will second.
Okay, and a second by select person Sakosha. Roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you very much.
Chair Hardikoff, just make sure that the intent of the Select Board is to include the condition from the road agent that the property owner repair ruts to Brooks Road upon completion of the project.
Okay, and as well, before it will be issued, there will be a notation listed on the actual application showing the distance to the proposed porch. Very good. So, and to include repairing ruts to Brooks Road upon completion of the project. Thank you.
Great.
Appointments?
None.
None. Very good. I like that. Review, no, oh, first of one public comment. And again, if anyone in the public would like to participate in this meeting, in order to, you either can raise your hand or in the upper left-hand corner of a laptop or computer screen, you'll see chat, and you could certainly send a quick chat to TA, MacGyver. Connor MacGyver.
George, did you try to put your hand up or request speaking?
Just trying to clear my screen. I have that piece across there with the microphone and everything else, the hand raising, and I get.
You should be able to right-click, I think.
Deny him.
Yeah, I've not, have we seen anyone try and participate in public comment at this time?
Yes.
Rick Walker has his hand up.
Oh, very good.
Rick, only one minute. Thirty seconds.
That's all I need. And I apologize, I meant to call Connor today and I forgot. Not sure if we need to do this, but I'll ask anyway to be sure. Next Monday, this area allows 50% restaurant occupancy. I'm asking the board to continue to allow outside dining in its present form until such time that the state opens up inside dining to all seats. Again, I'm not sure if we need that, if you guys need to take that kind of an action, but I would ask anyway, just to be sure.
I'm not sure either, but does anyone on the Select Board object to that?
No. No.
Okay, so seeing as there's no objection, I think that we could certainly move forward with that. Thank you, Chief Walker.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I don't see any other hands raised. There's a couple people participating over the phone. If you'd like to speak, just press star six to unmute yourself. If you're on the computer, you can raise your hand or send a chat message over.
Okay, so seeing as we have no other public comments and we've given an appropriate amount of time for them, let's move forward with review of meeting minutes from our prior meeting a month ago, the date of which was May 11, 2020. Any changes to the meeting minutes that anyone has noted?
George Bailey has his hand up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as written.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and a roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all. The next on the agenda is the bid, oh, I'm sorry, you want a staff report. Town Administrator MacGyver, staff report, please.
That's great, thank you. Everything I have for you tonight is on my report. The only thing I will share is the first meeting in June is our June work anniversaries. So down the bottom of page eight, top of page nine of my report, you'll see that Scott Young, currently a part-time police officer, has been with the town for 22 years. Timothy Booty, a volunteer firefighter, EMT, has been with the town for 19 years. Katie Perry, the Administrative Assistant in the Police Department, has been with the town for 15 years. Monica Poitras has been with the town for 10 years. John Huckins, a building inspector, code enforcement officer, has been with the town for seven years. Eric Baker is not a police detective. Eric Baker is a police sergeant. Apologize for that typo. No offense, Sergeant Baker, has been with the town for three years. Sean Guile, volunteer fire EMS, has been with the town for three years. Jacob Cummings, also in the Fire Department for three years. Megan DeRozier's same for three years. Timothy Seawards has been a police officer for two years, as well as Donald Morse. They were hired together, went to the academy together, both for two years. And Tiffany Cottle this month is celebrating her one-year anniversary working for the town as the Municipal Office Administrator.
Well, thank you all for your hard work.
Everyone, yes.
Yeah.
Great work.
Thank you.
And Municipal Office Administrator Cottle, what do you have for us?
Just two quick things for your signature. We have AP Register 2020-46 and the 2020 dog warrant. That's all.
Oh, the dog warrants. Yes, people, register your dogs. Okay.
And I could add one thing, one additional thing you'll see come through requesting your signatures is the annual appointment or reappointment of the fire warden and deputy fire wardens. So this is a recommendation to the State Fire Marshal's Office from a community. So no significant change, but you'll see that in your signature packet as well.
Thank you. Town Administrator MacGyver, the fire warden and the assistant fire warden, are they also our forest wardens?
I believe so. Chief Walker?
Yes, that's correct. They are.
Excellent. Thank you.
Tracy?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to make a quick comment about staff reports.
Yes.
My comment is, I would just like to thank Connor and Municipal Office Administrator Cottle because I remember a time not so long ago where staff reports had all the detail and the agenda didn't have a whole lot with it. So I appreciate it so that it is a much more transparent process than when this started, when I started with the board several years ago.
Excellent, yes. And we should take the time actually to welcome a new Barringtonite, Jack MacGyver. So that's an exciting new expansion to our town administrator's family. We're glad to have another Barrington resident.
Fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback, Andy.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to old business, the bid award for the six-wheeled dump truck. Is Mark on here?
He is.
Okay.
So when he unmutes himself, you'll remember this is the bid that we let advertise for a little bit longer to attract more of an interest, which it worked. You'll see all of the responses linked in my report. They're available on the town's website as well. And I sent out an email earlier today, as Mark will discuss. We'll either be looking for a conditional approval from the board, condition on Mark's satisfaction with the engine that was specified, or if the board would rather discuss the parts that won't change or aren't pending, and then table the final decision until June 22nd. Mark and I are open to either option, but I'll let Mark get into the details of his recommendation and a couple of things we talked about, automatic transmission, the details of the engine that Mark will be looking for. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, so up until 11 o'clock today, I was ready to ask you folks to award the cabin chassis to Peterbilt of New Hampshire. Today I had a discussion with one of the salesmen involved in the bidding process, not from Peterbilt, and he basically was feeding me some information as to the fact that the engine in the Peterbilt, it's possible it may not be an equivalent engine to the other three that would bid per the specs of the bid. So I can't in good conscience ask you to award this until I get all the information straightened out and I can satisfy myself that it is indeed the same engine. And I'll have to go into the engine specs of each engine to do it as far as bore and stroke and all the other stuff. And I'll probably end up contacting Cummins North Atlantic and talk to an expert there that can verify, yes, that this pack car PX9 engine is the same as the Cummins L9 engine that was specified in the bid. But I'm gonna need a little time to do that, so I guess I beg your indulgence to give me till the meeting to get this straightened out. I just wanted all to be apples for apples.
Very good. So you're asking the board to table this until June 22nd. Does anyone on the board object to that?
I got a question.
Yeah, if I may, Tracy, I don't necessarily, if the board is comfortable with everything else, I think it would be appropriate to provide a conditional approval if it checks out. So basically, the engine is just a rebranded Cummins engine. And like Mark said, he hasn't had a chance to verify that it is 100% apples to apples. He's pretty sure it is. That's what Peterbilt put it in as, as equivalent. So I think if Mark finds that it isn't the same and he's concerned about it, I think he would reevaluate his recommendation, but if he finds that it is the same, the recommendation would be the same. So if the board wanted to provide a conditional approval, we could not have to readdress it at the June 22nd meeting. Regardless, even if we do table it, I think it would be productive to talk about the rest of the recommendation and the automatic versus manual transmission items as well, if you're willing to do that.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Beginning with select person air, go ahead, select person air.
I have two things. First of all, on the ordinary transmission, is it an Allison? I know there's another, other one, I think.
Yes, it would be an Allison 3500 series.
All right, because I've heard the other brand, the, I can't, up the shift, I heard they were having problems. They weren't the same.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is, it's an Allison 3500.
Okay.
And then, this is not the bid specs. But I think in some day, we have to go to computerized, the spreaders, the sanders. Once we start thinking about that.
Is that new business?
Well, it has to do with trucks, the sander on the trucks.
It's a good, yeah, it's a good point, Dan, and I think now's a good time to start having that conversation. You'll, you know, in Mark's recommendation, he's recommending to hold on to the sander we have now, which kind of goes along with your idea that, hey, maybe when it's time to replace that sander, we consider replacing it with a computerized unit so we can track our distribution and be able to report to the state like the requirements are going to be.
Okay.
I don't want, it doesn't have to be by the bid now, but it's something to think about.
Okay.
Get it on the radar. Good.
Yep. So.
We have the ability to retrofit existing Sanders with the computerized distribution technology.
That's good to know.
It'd be nice to know what the cost is.
Yeah. Select person Bailey, you were next with questions.
Thank you very much. And my only question is, is that if I would ask that Mark consider verifying the engine type with the other manufacturer so to see what they have to say in comparison to the one that we're looking at.
Are you talking about when he mentioned the bore and stroke, like knowing?
Yeah.
Okay.
What their opinion is as to being equal.
And it sounds like Mark is doing that exploration. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
You're gonna, you wanna contact both manufacturers then?
I would be contacting probably Cummins themselves and basically ask them, hey, is this pack car motor really a Cummins through and through? Or is it a mongrel, you know, that's just got some Cummins parts in it or whatever?
Okay.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Select person Sakosha or Vice Chair Knapp, to either of you have any questions, concerns, or comments in reference to this?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I was, I was, it was very interesting to read the feedback from Sommersworth and that they've had several of these trucks and have had no problems with them. So, you know, I'm all for investing a little more to save us a lot down the road.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion conditional to the investigation of the bore and stroke and having the engine be compatible to a Cummins engine? Would anyone like to make a motion with those stipulations?
So move.
Okay, so I had a movement by Bailey, a second by Sakosha, is that correct?
Yeah.
And so just to be clear, this would be a motion to approve and award the cabin chassis to Peterbilt of New Hampshire and the equipment, less the sander, because we'll keep the existing sander to Viking Sives for the equipment.
Why did they pass the director's approval?
Yeah.
And with, and with the additional automatic transmission?
Well, I was gonna ask, so once we get to funding, is the bore, it's $5,000 to upgrade to an automatic transmission, is that the direction the board wants to go?
$152,645 would be the purchase price to include the automatic transmission. Is that the motion you'd like to make, select person Bailey?
That is part, that is part of everything. It's all up in one big thing.
Yes, and is that the motion you'd like to second, select person Sakosha?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all. That was, it was a lot of material there, and I think it was a good thing that we extended that bidding process.
We're very blessed to have Mark. He's been in the trade a long time, so.
Yep. I'll take some time to thank you, Mark, and the Malago Road resurfacing looks amazing, and they've raised it up, so I think we'll have a much better road long-term out there. It looks great. Thank you.
Yeah. We were able to keep a lot of problems on that corner in the process of doing this. So, you know, the perpetual, you know, run across the road when you get a heavy rain, that won't be happening anymore, and, you know, the road was absolutely junk and now it's nice. So we solved a lot of problems there. It went well.
It looks fabulous. Thank you, Mark. Moving on to the bid award for the Asset Management Grant Engineering Consultant. I know we've all reviewed this material. There's a recommendation for awarding this to, I'm gonna pronounce this wrong, Hoyle Tanner and Associates. Am I saying that correctly, Town Administrator MacGyver?
Yes.
Okay, and any questions, concerns, comments about this recommendation?
I just had a comment on it.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I believe Hoyle Tanner was involved with the Young Road Bridge. Is that correct?
And Malago.
Yes.
And Young Road, we ended up accepting a bridge that they said met the engineering spec, but clearly did not meet any of the visual or the actual design specs in that regard. And then, and then on Malago Road, they ended up having to cut the wing walls, which I don't know how that, how it got missed in the design process or in the review process. My only concern with Hoyle and Tanner is I feel like they're just, they haven't provided enough oversight in the projects that we've seen from them so far, because we've run into problems that have had to go back and be corrected.
Sure, so I certainly hear that feedback. I guess what I would say about the project, so it's a completely different, entirely different division at Hoyle and Tanner. You know, these engineering firms, especially the ones that put in for this project, large engineering firms, completely different team. And this, the asset management project isn't a construction project, per se. We're looking for somebody to come in, get the most bang for the buck for the $30,000 that we have as a grant opportunity, somebody that's familiar with the grant program, familiar with the type of software programs that we'd be looking to implement. Um, and so certainly if, if in reviewing the other three proposals, um, you felt like one of them could do it better. Um, you know, certainly we can take a second look. Um, you know, both Aaron and I, uh, read through all four of the proposals. And the only one that gave us confidence that one, they had, uh, a story experience with this grant program. And we're willing, or we're prepared to offer us a software program that's suitable for a community our size. Not a big city with water and sewer and the, the complex asset management programs that would be too much for us. Um, the one that gave us the confidence was Hoyle and Tanner. So like I said, if in reviewing the other ones, you might have more confidence in one of the other. Um, the others would be DuBois and King, VHB, or Weston and Sampson. Uh, we can take a look.
Any other questions, comments or concerns from select board members?
Yeah.
Go ahead, select person air.
Oh, Andy, you forgot about the crack on Malago that turned into a fracture. And then are they engineers or are they observationists?
So, um, the, the only thing that, um, caught my attention that I was looking at out of it, which is. Part of why I brought it up is, um, my, my big concern is from a thoroughness standpoint. Um, I understand they may be different divisions, but we, I, I just haven't seen a whole lot of thorough or completeness from the work that they've done. And maybe it doesn't carry from one department to the other, but that's been my experience with them. Um.
Is your concern deep enough to table this after, until the, um, review of the other four proposals?
Well, I, so I looked at, I, I mean, I don't have any, I have some experience dealing with DuBois and King through this. And then also some, uh, you know, with Hoyle and Tanner, Weston and Sampson, I didn't, I don't have. Any real experience other than what they put forward and same thing with VHB. Um, but I think what Connor was referencing is, um, both of them talk about larger town packages. But I know, uh, Weston and whatever their last name is, also had some, um, smaller towns. For their services.
Okay. Are there any other concerns from select board members?
I have some. Thank you.
Okay. Go, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Thank you. I, just to go along with what, uh, select man app had to say is that. Even though they have different departments, they had, you still have the principals that are at the top and they're responsible for all of it. So if it runs rampant, in my opinion, it's running rampant when we had the difficulty with those two projects. And I, I think that reconsideration should be, uh, there, uh, before we award the contractor. At least we turn around and, uh, uh, review a second time around all the bids.
Um, do you have a response to that, um, town administrator MacGyver?
So, I mean, you have to understand Hoyle and Tanner as our engineering consultant for the state bridge aid projects. Um, are deeply involved in the $2 million Green Hill Bridge that were, uh, in the finalized, finalizing. The, the designs have been finalized. We'll be reviewing the permanent easement tonight, um, and the old settlers' bridge project. Um, and I guess, you know, the specific concerns that, um, vice chair Nap raised about the Young Road Culvert, I wasn't here for that. I understand that there were, um, some issues with that construction project. And my understanding is that the town, and whether that was in the select board or not, it, you know, isn't clear to me. But the town was given the opportunity to weigh in on the angle of the wing wall for, um, the downstream side of that culvert. For, you know, another issue was the, um, the ditch line on the uphill side. Um, where the guardrail extended beyond, um, a telephone pole and that caused icing issues. And so that issue was identified, taken to Hoyle and Tanner. At their cost, they fixed the problem. So, I mean, I guess with, with Young Road, yeah, there were some issues as you could anticipate encountering with any construction project. They brought issues to the town and were given guidance. Whether the select board was satisfied with that or not. Is, you know, like I said, I, I wasn't here. I don't know. But with an issue that was identified after the fact, they came back and fixed it on their dime. And so I think, you know, for that project, what more could you ask for on, or, or what, other than getting it right the first time? Um, but what could you ask for? What would you expect to be different? Uh, because I don't think you can ever expect things to go perfect all the time. As far as the Malago Bridge project, similarly, so the, the problems identified, um, the, the, on one side, on the southwest corner. Um, the wing wall was cast too high. So the concrete was cast too high. And they worked with the contractor to address the problem and, um, fix the, the problem to their satisfaction. We hire them to monitor the project and when issues arise, they monitor and provide input to, to, um, complete the project to their satisfaction. Their name's on it. And with both of those projects, similar to what we're proposing here. The, the state requirements for the projects are significant. And working with a partner that understands the state agencies and what it requires to work with the state agencies, get them the information they need. Is tremendous. And that's what, that's the experience that Hoyle and Tanner brings. So is, you know, for projects that don't have 80% funding from the Department of Transportation or 100% funding from the Department of Environmental Services. Maybe they wouldn't be the right partner for the town because they're costly. But that, that cost exists with all of the engineers that have the quality. The town's best interest in mind. And if the board is in a position where they're going to continue saying, taking issue when items come up from Hoyle and Tanner. You need to evaluate the fact that they are deep into two projects for the town. Um, so if, if you're not satisfied, you need to make a decision about that. Um, opposed to, you know, something like this, which again is a different division, a completely different project. And it's clear from reviewing the proposals that they have the most experience and they're best prepared. To provide us a package that is good for Barrington, um, not good for. Communities that have, uh, much more complex, um, stormwater infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you, um, town administrator MacGyver. Any other questions, concerns or comments from the select board?
No, I'm just gonna close with the comment of, uh, um, the, the, I understand, um, administrator MacGyver's position on Hoyle and Tanner. Or, but we have, uh, I will also make the comment that time and time again. Because of the way the engineering standards are written with the state and the way that you have to use a state-approved engineer. We've kind of been, um, pushed down the road that we're on, and this is where we're at at this point. So I'm just raising the issue that when I look at it, here's what I see. Um, here's been my experience. And when I look at, uh, some of the others, I see what looks like pretty credible teams. So, um, that have in some cases, some longstanding years of service. So I would, I think the question I would ask is who are they putting on this project and what is the service they have? And are they a principal or are they just delegating this off to somebody else? Cause we see that happen. On numerous other projects and we've had to bear the brunt of it on the projects that they have done.
Okay. That, that, before that question gets answered, there's also a hand up for select person air in reference to this. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, first of all, I apologize. I did not review. Um, I had a problem printing on my computer. I didn't reach out for help. So my fault. And then on the repair for the guardrail trench line. The town supplied the labor. Equipment, do it. So how can we say that they took care of it? They, all they do is move it on a piece of paper. We did, still did the physical work on it.
No, CWS fence did the work, um, did the guardrail work.
No, they, they pulled the drive rail, but we went and dug it and we did this well.
Okay. Um, so is there another firm? Uh, well, first I should ask the rest of the board. Would anyone like to make a motion using the recommendation by the town administrator? Okay. Seeing as you would not like to make a motion based on the recommendation by the town administrator. Let's speak to who would have been the second, uh, firm chosen. TA MacGyver?
Um, so again, I have, I have limited confidence in the ability for the other. Engineering consultants to get the town what we need out of this project. Um, in, in priority order, uh, the distant second would be Weston Sampson, then DuBois and King, then VHB.
Okay. So, and, and who has oversight? What department has oversight of this, um, project?
Um, so this is something that, um, Aaron would be working, um, in conjunction with Mark on the, uh, asked development of the asset management.
Okay. So I'm going to return to the select board and ask this. Given that Mark and Aaron are the principal departments working with, um, the contracted engineering consultant. Do we feel comfortable with our town team and their knowledge base in also working with this firm? That has been recommended by the town administrator?
My, my general comment is, is I, I will almost always trust what our department heads tell us. Um, in this case, my, my gripe is, is that I haven't heard anything. That gives me any reason why I wouldn't trust another person. The only thing I've heard. Is that they work with the state a lot and the next person was a distant second.
I'm happy to hear more specific details. So, and again, for one of the benefits of the state requiring, um, the qualification-based selection process. Is you have to review the criteria. Um, they, they develop a matrix. You don't have to, you know, fill in the numbers for the matrix. But the, and again, I mean, I'm happy if, if. Has, that has reviewed the proposals, thinks that another engineering consultant, um, would be better than the one that myself and Aaron have recommended. I'm, I'm happy to hear that and have that discussion. Or if you look through Weston Sampson as a second. Um, you know, they're, the, the communities that they have experience in, in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. Are larger communities that have much more complex infrastructure, both stormwater and wastewater that they're monitoring. So the, the asset management grant program through DES is a huge program. It's centered around MS four compliance, which is a federal program about stormwater wastewater runoff. And the outfalls. And so there's engineering firms that that's all they do. And/or they have huge divisions within their departments that that's what they do. That's the VHB and the Weston Sampson. And so anytime they see asset management, they throw their proposal at it because they're used to working in these hundreds of thousands or millions of dollar projects. Chasing this, that state money, but comes down from the federal government. And the Barrington's project is much different. We aren't required to comply with MS four. Those requirements aren't there for us. The money is, the money's available to start coming towards compliance. So we're in a much different position than most everybody chasing this asset management money. And I didn't see anywhere, and we made that clear in our proposal. I don't see anywhere in the other proposals where they really understand that. DuBois and King a little bit, but I didn't get confidence from DuBois and King that they have the kind of specific experience working with DES administering one of these grant programs. So again, if you look at Weston Sampson as a second, they've worked with some smaller communities. But again, the, the specifics that they've provided for those smaller communities they've worked with. Have been regarding the kind of underground infrastructure that asset management is mostly focused on. And that experience is wholly irrelevant to what we have in Barrington, where they would just be tracking. Culverts and the outfalls for ditch lines through the grant program. But again, the big picture for us, this is a small part of the big picture. This is an opportunity to get us going. Use that $30,000 to purchase a software program to start developing and using an asset management program. The money has to be used specifically for stormwater runoff. So that's inventorying our culverts and our outfalls from ditch lines. But then we plan to expand on that and select an asset management program. Where we can also start inventorying our road infrastructure, our signs, et cetera, et cetera. So, and we won't continue to be working, we're not going to be locked into an engineering consultant. This engineering consultant is for the $30,000 grant program. Um, so again, I'm happy to talk specifics, um.
So what, one of the things I'm hearing from you, town administrator MacGyver, is that the software program that's being offered to you through Hoyle Tanner and Associates. Matches the size of our town and our needs most specifically. Is this correct?
So none of them offered a specific software program. Um, but what the, the experience that Hoyle and Tammer, Hoyle and Tanner offer demonstrates that they understand what, what we're looking for. And they, they didn't, you know, if you, um. They, they didn't, without offering a specific program, um, they offer, you know, like, um, like if you look at this screenshot, uh, compared to, you know, the other ones, um, they're not, they're offering a program that can manage the type of infrastructure we have, infrastructure we have.
Okay.
So with their program, is there an ongoing, what do we have to do to maintain it after we're done with them?
And so it won't be through Hoyle and Tanner. So it'll be an asset management program, a software program that we purchase, um, outside. And so it'll be, my anticipation is, is that it'll be similar to the other software programs we have that we purchase. And where there'll be a maintenance fee through directly to the, um, company we purchased the software from. Um, and so that, the select board will still be making that decision. So after we are awarded the money and are working with an engineering consultant, we'll put out a request for proposals for a software program. The select board will review and award that. And those are the types of questions that we can ask and decisions we can make at the time. Um, again, this is part of the goal the select board started pursuing last year. Of developing and actually having an asset management program, um, for our road infrastructure. Um, so I think there will be ongoing costs, but the select board will be involved in decision-making, um, and information once that's there.
Questions, comments, concerns, folks? Go ahead, select person air.
Well, I have, I just raised concerns more than we're talking. They just, on the Malago, we had to correct the swales and stuff over there because it drainage problem. And where they left it, it should, it should, it could have been corrected all as one project. And it, that was, wasn't, so.
So what's that person air bringing up is that as Mark indicated through the improvements in Malago. That entire corner has had drainage issues for many, many years. Um, likely dating back to the construction of the stone farm development. And that, that issue has been ongoing for a long time. And anybody that travels that area recently or, or regularly knows that. Um, the issue Dan's raising is that the culvert outside of the project scope for the Malago Bridge. The culvert underneath the driveway of one of the abutting property owners was tipped many degrees the wrong way. And after the bridge was completed, there were some drainage problems there where there have been drainage problems for years. And Hoyle and Tanner, for free, on their own, at Mark's request, came out and gave a recommendation on how to permanently improve. That drainage infrastructure, um, which Mark implemented wonderfully and the drainage is going well so far. So to select person airs point that that was, should have been their responsibility from the beginning. That was outside of the project scope. When asked for their opinion, they came back, offered it for free, didn't give us a bill. And their recommendation, as implemented by Mark and his team, who did a fantastic job improving that area. Um, was great. So I, I don't understand how that is an issue, um, on the credibility of the Montana.
No, I think that helps them.
Okay. So would anyone like to, um, at this point, given the amount of discussion, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the recommendation? And award, um, the consultation, um. Contract to Hoyle Tanner and Associates.
Select person has his hand up.
Yeah. Sorry?
I would, yeah, chair.
Okay. So I have a first for a motion for the acceptance of this consultant for contract. Do I have a second?
Hold on. Is that, George, is that what your hand was up for? Or did you have a comment?
My, my hand was up for, to, uh, to, to make that, uh, motion. After listening to, uh, the last, uh, two or three minutes of the, uh, discussion, I think that, uh, this is just for a consultant job and we go from there. And then, uh, that's, that's what changed my mind. So exactly what it's for. So then I make a motion that we, uh, Then I make a motion that we award the contract to Hoyle Tanner for the asset management grant engineering consultant.
Gotcha. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it, but I would also conditionally like to ask that Connor has a just a very like frank conversation with them, maybe even have them review this section of the meeting so that they understand where our board kind of is on this or where some of us feel like we've been based on the experience we've had.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Dr. and Madam Chair on the motion?
I have a first and a second, so roll call vote please, beginning with select person air.
Yeah, no.
Bailey, yes.
Nap, aye.
Sakoshai.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all. And by the way, thank you for, you know, doing what we're supposed to do and having a very candid discussion about this. That's important.
We have, once, once we've been burned twice, it's not, it's not good for us. And I must say that selectman Nap is very, very good in his remembrance of those items and so was Mr. Air. So I really have to thank them for their input.
Yep.
I think it's good to make it known that this is, that we've been burned, that we've, we have had problems twice. And I mean, shame on, then the first time, shame on us the second time. And like, if there's a third, that's it.
Okay. Moving on to the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership Grant acceptance, I think you've all reviewed the Conservation Commission's awarded grant. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the $3,775 from the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership?
I'll make a motion to accept $3,775 from the Great Bay Resource Protection Project directed at the Polish project.
And is there a second on that?
Sakoshai.
Okay, now, are you willing to second that, select person Sakoshia?
Yes.
Very good. So I have a first and a second roll call vote, beginning with select person air, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakoshai.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you very much. The next on the agenda is the Public Works Food Drive results. And following that is the roadside cleanup results. So could we hear from Aaron, please, on those two items?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi, Aaron.
Hi. So as you know, for Public Works Week, we wanted to do a food drive to promote things and we chose 68 Hours of Hunger. And at the time, they were planning on doing a summer program, which wasn't completely, you know, solidified at the time while we were doing this and with everything going on with COVID. You know, we took the opportunity to choose them and the, in the case, you know, we had a great turnout. So as I showed in the PowerPoint that I had sent over, that we raised over $1,200 in cash donations.
Awesome.
Very good, very good.
And then for, along with $400 in food donations and as well as what happens sometimes with N68 Hours of Hunger, some of the food that they are given, they cannot necessarily use. The N68 Hours, just to give a quick background, is the time between when kids are in school, when they leave on Friday and when they go back to school on Monday morning. And most of the meals are stuff that the children can cook themselves. So sometimes there are the donations that they get, they are not able to utilize them, so they are given to the food pantry. So in addition, with what we raised for N68 Hours of Hunger, we did three boxes for the food pantry.
Excellent. And how about roadside cleanup day? Can you give us a recap on that?
So we had an awesome day. Unlike last year, the weather kind of didn't really cooperate with us. One of the things that I guess we had going and not going for us is that everyone was home and they were home for Earth Day, so then they all wanted to participate in Earth Day, which was great. You know, I was the crazy lady driving around asking people to hold their garbage till Saturday. So we could add it to our totals. So there was a lot of people understanding. It was a little bit more difficult to keep track of volunteers this time around, but I mean, we had at least over 100 people participate. I'm sure you saw many of us out in town picking up. And once again, we picked up over a ton of trash from the sides of the roads. It wasn't as bad with electronics. We did have a number of tires and some metal. But again, we are all able to recycle that properly and, you know, get it off the streets.
Excellent. Great, great Earth Day project. Thank you.
So thank you to all the volunteers to make this possible.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Karen. Moving on to the Town of Barrington Services and COVID-19, I assume TA MacGyver, Town Administrator MacGyver is going to speak to that?
Yes, so not much of an update. Following guidance, slowly, you know, trying to work back to some level of normalcy, but still remaining by appointment only for the town clerk's office. The, one of the pieces of exciting news I'm glad to share, so late last week, the town was awarded, the first round was approved for $53,000 of aid from the state. So that's counting towards our $213,000, which was allotted for the Town of Barrington. That does not include an additional almost $10,000, which is FEMA eligible, which we'll be putting in for. So this funding will, will be tremendous in limiting the budget impact of some of the items that have cost the town. So some of the bigger things we've been able to use that money for are covering 100% of the costs for all of the time that we've been required to pay folks for not working. So that was a federal mandate that came down if, through the Families First Coronavirus Act. Some of the other areas that we've been able to use the money for are improvements to our network infrastructure, supporting telework, things like VPN licenses. We've even been able to purchase a couple of laptops to support folks working remotely. So we'll continue to explore utilizations for that money. One of the things, and I know I've said it before, that I'm most excited about for some of the adaptations that we've been forced to make is these are service improvements that will be able to continue long past the coronavirus. So every department across the town has done a tremendous job in adapting their services, figuring out how to meet the needs of the public remotely, online, and in a lot of times a more efficient way, sometimes a less efficient way, and sometimes it costs the town a little bit to offer the services. But I think it's tremendous that so many staff and department heads have done everything they can to continue offering our services. We've stayed open the whole time. We've worked really hard to meet the needs of our residents, which is, you know, obviously why we're here. So we're getting some support from the state. Things are going well. Happy to answer any questions or concerns.
I know select person air mentioned a question at one point of when we will be reopening the town hall based on the advice of state government.
So the town hall's never been closed per se.
I guess I, I meant back to non-appointment.
Yep, so the, the town clerk's office has been basically following lockstep with the Department of Motor Vehicles, serving obviously in a similar capacity. And we actually closed, you know, went to appointment only a little bit after them. But the state's developed great guidance. We're working to adapt that to our facilities. So some of the concerns, you know, our current facility isn't really set up to have adequate social distancing with any more than one person in that office. So that certainly introduces some constraints. So even, you know, when folks start coming into that office, it's still going to be one person at a time, even though we have three desks to serve people. So I think continuing to encourage folks to renew their registrations online and set up appointments where they can drop off and pick up the, drop off the registration paperwork, be, you know, have it brought out to them or processed immediately so they can leave with it, opposed to having it mailed to them. That will continue to be encouraged until social distancing isn't the recommendation, just because of the facilities we have there. But like I said, the, primarily the town clerk has been following lockstep with the Department of Motor Vehicles.
Okay, and when do we think we will be returning to regular face-to-face meetings of the select board?
So there's been some interesting guidance, and I'll be the first to admit that I haven't read it all in detail other than the headlines. So basically, the Attorney General's Office, so I won't get into all the details, but the, the governor's executive orders that have, that have limited the meetings or groupings of 10 or more people, that same executive order exempts government. The Attorney General's Office came back and said, well, no, government, it still applies for the 10, 10 or more people. Then like a week later, the governor's office basically said, listen, public meetings, meetings of city councils, select boards can happen in person. But there still needs to be a remote participation, participation option because if there's 10 or more non-elected officials in a, in an area, then that still is inconsistent with the executive order. So basically, they said that select boards can meet in person. So the five select board members can meet in person, but everybody else basically has to meet electronically. So I will, I'll do my homework and understand that a little bit more specifically. That was late last week. And I'll get with the chair to decide what we want to do. But again, for the public, for the foreseeable future, and I think they were tossing around at least until the end of the year, for the public participation in these meetings is going to be electronic.
Okay, that's good, good to know. Thank you for that update. And I appreciate the transparency of sharing it while we are on a platform where many people can hear what we're up against in trying to implement this. Onto new business, the, yep, go ahead, select person air.
Well, I too, I've been really watching it, but I think on the 15th, we'll open up a lot, and part of the states open up 100% restaurants, and some restaurants will be 50%.
Well, I'm going to trust our town administrator to do the research and refer back to us on this because I think there needs to be a full review of, of where we're supposed to head with this.
Yeah, I guess I'll ask select board members, and I'll share first what I've heard. I've heard tremendous support from residents in town for the services that we're offering. They've had excellent experiences with the town clerk's office, setting up by appointments, the building office, you know, on down the line. So I think what we're doing is working well. I think it makes the public feel more comfortable, the way that we're offering our services. I know Chief Walker has gone above and beyond issuing campfire permits in a way that makes residents feel comfortable. So if you've heard something different that residents are, you know, not satisfied with the services we're offering, please let me know. I don't feel the need right now to make dramatic adjustments that, because what we're doing is working. So if select person air, if, if you have heard concerns from folks that setting up appointments in the town clerk's office isn't working for them, please let me know and we can figure out a way, like I said, to continue offering services that meet the needs of residents. But I've heard positive feedback so far.
Yeah, and I will share with you that I did register a vehicle last week by appointment in between clients. They disinfected the entire writing space that people were working near. We were brought in one at a time. We kept ourselves six feet apart from each other. Everyone was wearing a mask or was on the other side of a, of a shield from us. So I, I felt very comfortable with what they were doing and thanked them. It was incredibly busy. The phones were ringing off the hook because everyone who had purchased a car in March, April, May, and into June were trying to get appointments. So it, it was very busy. They handled it with a lot of grace under fire, that's for sure.
Was that the Maserati you got, Tracy?
I'm sorry?
Was that the Maserati you got?
It was, it was not a new Maserati, but it definitely was a new vehicle. 0% financing, everyone. Fuel the economy as well. Community Development Block Grant Administrator Award. I'm going to let our town administrator speak to this. But I will say this before we spend too much time on it. I read through, I'm familiar with the Community Development Block Grant Program. I'm very familiar with the software and the report outs on this. And so I have no idea and have never met the one consultant that sent their application in, but I can tell you that it is a hairy process. And I'm glad we had someone that returned the consultant bid proposal. So go ahead, TA MacGyver.
Yeah, just real quick. So board members will remember the Community Development Block, Block, Block Grant Program has to be administered through a municipality or a county for the communities like Lee Oaks. So they have problems with their water and septic. They were approved for funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program that was submitted on their behalf from the Town of Barrington. The next step is to select a grant administrator. So I worked closely with the folks at the state from CDFA that administer the Community Development Block Grants. And there's nobody that administers grants except for Donna Lane. And she's terrific. You'll remember she's the one that came and made the presentation to the select board prior to submitting the application. This is a woman who has tried to retire, but there's nobody to do this because as Tracy indicated, it's a cumbersome process. CDFA is working with the regional planning commissions, trying to get them on board and prepared to administer them. Fortunately, because of COVID-19 and the influx of money to this Community Development Block Grant Program, that's going to kind of force regional planning commissions to get into the business of administering these grants. And hopefully that will expand the availability. The original plan was to have the Stratford Regional Planning Commission work alongside Donna Lane on this project to kind of get their feet wet with their added workload with COVID-19. It doesn't look like that's going to happen anymore. You know, Donna Lane was the only one that put in for it. You'll see in the award paperwork that the Community Development Block Grant, CDFA knows that it's very likely only one person can put in for it. There's a whole section that says, hey, only one person put in for it, but we like what they said, so we're comfortable moving forward with them. So yes, the one person who put in for it, Donna Lane, is the recommendation. And the, the town is very distantly involved in this project. And the working with an experienced administrator will only make it easier for us.
Yep. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the select board? Seeing no questions, comments, or concerns, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this consultant's proposal for administration of the Community Development Block Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's, I heard Jim Sakosh on a second?
No, Andy seconded.
Oh, Andy seconded. Select person air, you have a question?
So the regional plan is that because of COVID-19, so that's, they're not helping out any more in Stratford County?
So Stratford County is still helping out with COVID-19. They were supposed to be in the process of learning how to administer through the Community Development Finance Authority, these Community Development Block Grants. But they don't have the ability to do that in person, side by side with this consultant at this time. Therefore, we're back to the one consultant that sent in the proposal.
All right.
Okay, so roll call vote, beginning with select person air, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakoshai.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all. Onto the police cruiser purchase. Do we have Chief Joy on the line?
It looks like he just unmuted himself. Just brief introduction. A ton of very valuable information put forward by the police chief. This is, this all started because I've urged department heads to consider, start considering their budget next year. The, our chief and deputy chief took that to heart and have thought hard about how they can reduce the budget impact for next year. I fully support their proposal to purchase an additional used cruiser this year. Like I said, you have details in your packet and our police chief will speak to it. It sounds like he's unmuted. I'll turn it over to him.
Am I on?
You're on, chief. Yeah.
Rock, roll.
So I've given everybody the materials that I'll go over briefly. I want to preface this by saying this is not a guaranteed purchase. The reason we went the route we did with the Missouri Highway Patrol is because that was guaranteed in the moment. That option going forward next year may not be available to us. With the pandemic going on, cruiser production is questionable. The gentleman from Missouri Fl- The gentleman from Missouri Flatout said that he wasn't sure what was going to happen with next year. They had 200 cruisers on order. They just didn't know. So we've taken a long look at the fleet. I've provided you folks, and it's been linked up with the purchase history, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, given the budget presentations from years past as well. It's hit or miss, ones, twos, zeros, ones, ones. We have plans in place going into the next budget cycle, which we'll present later on, obviously, to stop that and get a good process in place to go forward, instead of ones planning ahead. To stop the hemorrhage now, the Ghost Cruiser, we've identified as costing us the most in maintenance. It has the highest mileage. Quite frankly, it's due for another expensive repair coming up, which I've held off on pending tonight's decision. And it's been in two collisions. It's not right. It hasn't been right. Chief Williams told you last year that it wasn't right, and it remains not right. So what we're looking at doing is going to Dover for the sealed bid. They're taking two 2017 Ford Explorers offline in the near future. I believe they're out for strip down right now. Dover takes theirs off at about 60,000 miles. So those are coming offline, so they can outfit their new cruisers. That will be a sealed bid process. We're hoping, based on history, that we can get a bid in, which will accomplish bringing that back to Barrington. Deputy Chief and I sat down, did the numbers. We figure we can get that cruiser online for a total of around $19,000. Given what we did with the Missouri Highway Patrol, we should be coming in at about $3,700 under our cruiser line item. We have available money in the rotating detail fund, due in large part to a lot of details lately. We also are in the positive on the vehicle maintenance and equipment line item for the same reason. So again, I provided you all with a breakdown, and it's been linked as well as to where the funds will come from for this. What I'm trying to do is essentially rip off an old Band-Aid and put a new one on for the time being, without impacting the taxpayers. The vast majority of this is coming as a result of working details. I wish I could give you a good, accurate amount for what we'll have coming in now, but the current quarter, I expect that we'll be above last quarter, based on the amount that the young women and men have been working thus far. And that's not anticipated to stop anytime in the near future.
Very good. Questions, concerns, comments from the board? Go ahead, Select Person Air had his hand up first.
I got to side with the ABC. I don't see rhyme or reason to this. And then I question the future. I've been hearing on the news, the Democrats, what they're up to and stuff. How much state funding and federal funding do we get? And will that affect the future budgets? And I don't think the vehicles that ABC probably utilized, right, rotation and mileage is up. They had a pretty big breakdown last year, so I sided with the ABC.
So what I'm hearing Select Person Air ask is, are police departments funded through the state?
No, so.
Thank you. That was one answer.
I heard a kind of different question about some of the others that we have coming in, and that doesn't go directly to the police department. And I think Dan's point that we may be facing funding shortages, revenue shortages in the future based on the economy is a very real reality. And I think that's why this is important now more than ever, because due to the increased outside details that the police department has been doing, there's funds available to pursue a purchase of an additional used cruiser. To limit the impact, there will still be the request for a cruiser next year, but opposed to asking for two cruisers next year, pursuing the purchase of a used one this year is consistent with that fact that we are going to see revenue shortages, and that will impact the budget that the Select Board has to put forward to voters next year.
And one of the other things I heard Chief Joy say is that there potentially with production may be a time constraint in receiving a new cruiser, and this would prepare us for any bridge of that timeframe. I think Select Person Bailey had his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to direct my questions to the Chief, if you don't mind. My first question, is this vehicle going to be solely used for details?
No. So this detail will be utilized for details, as all of them are. This cruiser will in fact be replacing the quote-unquote Ghost Cruiser, the sole unmarked unit in the fleet. It does get used for details, but it gets used for other services as well.
All right, my other question is, what is the balance in the revolving fund for outside details?
So Mr. Bailey, I can give you the fund as of April 21st, which should be fairly consistent, because we're working mid-quarter right now. The fund, excuse me, the detail fund at that point in time was $15,413.43.
And the only thing I'll add to that, Chief, is the treasurer has custody of these funds, and the Select Board is agents to expend for those outside detail funds. Chief and I spent a while going back and forth with the treasurer to discuss this purchase. The treasurer was more than comfortable that the fund could support a $10,000 withdrawal based on the current balance and volume of outside details.
And my last question and concern for everything else, and thank you for the information on that, Connor. My final question is, are we charging enough when we send a unit out and an officer out, or your whole unit out? Are we charging enough?
So that's a discussion that we need to have going into the next budget year. The detail rate was raised some time ago to $75 an hour billing. I can certainly do a comparison around us, but I do, off the cuff, want to say we are lower than certain jurisdictions around.
So does that mean that we get more details than others, or no?
It doesn't mean we get more. It means that we're billing out less. Right now, we are flush, because Lewis Tree happens to be going through the town of Barrington, and has been for six to eight weeks, give or take. They've got a lot of work to do. We have gone to Durham some. We do travel to other towns when they can't fill their details, just like we've had Rollinsford, Lee, and Stratford in Barrington, when we've been unable to fill ours. But for the time being, we're just busy in town, which is good all around.
Okay, any other Select Board questions? Go ahead, Select Person.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I didn't get an answer for that question. We've, he's talking about the budget review and everything else. Do we need to raise our fee?
I think what the Chief, what I heard the Chief say was that we made a decision for this year, he'll be bringing forward a recommendation after review for next year. Is that correct, Chief?
I can't, yes and no, ma'am. That detail fee was raised several years ago, prior to my time here, obviously. It's something I need to research and actually do formal look into with the other communities around us. I would hate to say yes, we need to raise our fee, without being educated as to what the business standard for Stratford County is. I know we bill less than several others, but I don't.
How long do you think it would take you, Chief, to do that?
Next Board of Selectmen's meeting is what, two weeks?
22nd.
I can have that information by the 22nd, easy.
Okay.
All right, and also, would you, also, when you do that, would you give us a report on a cruiser report as to the year mileage, and who is the primary user of that vehicle?
Year mileage and maintenance costs were included in your material, Selectman Bailey.
Chair Hardikoff, if I could offer two things. George, I don't know if this is the question that you were asking, but yes, the outside detail rate covers all of our wage and benefit costs. It also covers a significant portion of the vehicle maintenance line. It goes directly into that budget line to support the amount spent on the maintenance of those vehicles. And the balance of that money stays in that outside detail revolving fund. So that fund accumulates money year over year, because after paying all of our bills, there's more money there. So if that was your question, we're not going backwards. It's not costing the town of Barrington money to do outside details. The second thing, my recommendation, and I'm sure the police chief would support this, I don't think that we should evaluate the rate for outside details before we settle on a new collective bargaining agreement for the police department, which we're scheduled to.
That is absolutely correct.
It does not hurt, does not hurt for me to ask these questions in preparation for September, when we're going to be sitting down and start discussing the budget. But the other.
No, and Mr. Bailey, I will absolutely have that information for you ASAP.
My other request was on the automobiles and the cruisers that we have. I would just like to know who the primary users are of the particular vehicles. If you tell me all the vehicles are shifted amongst everybody, that's fine. Or does the detective have a certain vehicle with the registration and everything else that's brought up in the last couple of years, talking about that for investigations? If that's the case, that's understandable. But if you could, I would appreciate that.
No, I can do that right now. If the board would like me to do so, I can go right down through and go through that now.
I don't need that information.
That information now, Madam Chair. I, we have put a lot of time in already on some other items, and because it's a request from me, I'd be willing to wait.
Yes, could we just add that to that expense report, Chief, and send it on? But Select Person Secosh has been patiently waiting to speak. Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to say, you know, as a business owner and looking at new vehicles, I can't agree more with, and I appreciate that Chief Joy is going ahead and has the forethought to think about this, but to get a new vehicle for next year, with the manufacturer switching up to do the ventilation systems, everything is going to be behind. Everything is behind now. I can't get some trucks that I want, and it's all coming, it's coming. So I think this is a wise decision. You know, and it's good forethought, and I mean, 60,000 miles on a cruiser, like, that's a good deal. Like, you know, we can ride that out, and, you know, not to be banged with like a new, brand-new $100,000 cruiser, stuff like that. I mean, it's all coming. So, I mean, that's my input, so.
Very good. And do we have any other questions, concerns, or comments on this issue before I ask for a motion? Go ahead, Select Person Air.
Yeah, can we review the ABC? They had a pretty in-depth breakdown last year. And Mr. Bailey was, touched a couple of them, I think. I make sure to satisfy the ABCs. They spent a lot of time on it last budget.
They did, and I wouldn't, and I wouldn't necessarily say that in this time of COVID and what we're up against with manufacturing, that we're in exactly the same situation we were in when we reviewed that material last year. I will ask if there are no other questions, comments, or concerns. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion authorizing the purchase of an additional used cruiser in 2020, with $10,000 coming from the outside detail revolving fund, and up to $5,221.12 coming from the vehicle fund and the vehicle maintenance operating line, using up the additional $3,778.88 coming from the vehicle operating budget line? Would anyone like to make that motion?
I would like to make the motion.
Very good. And would anyone like to second the motion?
I'll second it, then.
Okay, and a roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Air.
Tracy, hang on. I've been waiting patiently and have not been able to get a word in.
Oh, Andy, you're, sorry, your video feed popped off of mine, even though I have you pinned. My apologies. Go ahead.
So my only comment is, we're looking at a 2017 Explorer, and looking at the, like, based on our Explorer's history, we have, they tend to float. We seem to be between 500 and a grand on them, and then as soon as they start getting up there in mileage, we're starting to see some bigger bills. But I don't want anyone to forget about this 2013 Taurus that we have with 122,000 miles on it. So.
Well, I think it's worried about the maintenance schedule. So Chief, can you, you know, tell us a little bit about the next maintenance thing that you have with the Explorer, the Ghost?
So to answer, so to answer Selectman Nap's question first, the reason that the 2013 Ford Taurus Unit 4 is highlighted in blue with the stars next to it is that as soon as the new, the quote-unquote "new" Charger that we got from the Missouri Highway Patrol is outfitted, that will be out of our fleet. Okay. The Charger was scheduled to already be online. Unfortunately, again, because of the pandemic and manufacturing, we were unable to get pieces and material that we needed to get that outfitted up and running. So we hit a standstill there. But Unit 4, the 23 Taurus, will be out of the fleet as soon as that Charger is ready to go.
Excellent. Okay, we have a, we have, go ahead, Select Person Nap.
All right, so the only thing that I was looking at is, and I don't know if anybody else has considered this or looks at it, but it is something I tend to look at, or what are the service milestones for a vehicle? And if we're buying a Ford Explorer that's at the 60,000 mile mark, just being cognizant of the service milestones that kick in after certain milestones along the way, whether it's the 7,500 to 10,000, the 20 to 30, the 50 to 60, but there are service milestones for these vehicles, and that's where the cost tends to come in from a maintenance standpoint.
Well, I think the costs that come up, but if we don't have a vehicle that, you know, we can purchase new to replace it, then we have people not being able to go out patrol. If that makes sense.
So Andy, do you have a direct question in reference to that? Are you asking the Chief to provide you not only who most often uses the vehicle, but what the expected maintenance schedules are at the 30, 60, 90 mark?
No, I'm looking at the maintenance schedule. That's why I was bringing it up.
This would likely be our second lowest mileage, if that's even a term. It would be our second to the lowest mileage amount on a vehicle, should we get the auction bid accepted. So any other questions, concerns, comments? Because I have a first and I have a second, so I'm going to ask for a roll call if there are no other questions, concerns, or comments.
I'm good. How does Andy feel on it?
Okay. I think Andy has expressed that he's looking at the mileage on our current vehicles, and we've got a lot of mileage on them. Is that what I'm hearing, Andy?
Does that make sense to you, Andy? Like, if we can't get a new vehicle because everything's backed up? I mean, is it better to have a used vehicle at this point, moment?
Well, is it, are we certain at this point that everything is backed up? I know next year we're concerned about it, but does it make sense to try and pop on a new?
I know the truck I ordered can't happen this year, and that's important.
And I'll share, the fire chief shared that the truck chassis, you remember that the board authorized, has seen delays as well. Right now, it's a month behind on delivery and could continue to change.
Yeah.
Buying new, buying used, but it's having something to use to keep the community going and, you know, keep the policing involved, you know, instead of, you know.
So I have a.
Maybe we can get the Dover Police horses.
All I'm asking is, and I didn't hear anybody else ask it or anybody talk about it, success being able to get a leftover Cruiser model 2019 before, is that something that we explored in this process?
We could try, but I don't see that happening.
Hang on, that was a question directly to Chief Joy. Chief Joy, have you explored getting a leftover 20? have you explored getting a leftover 2019 Cruiser model?
I quite frankly have not, because the cost of a new Ford Explorer is gonna be 33,000 standalone. I have not investigated that, because quite, I don't know that I can come up with that money anywhere freely in my budget slash the rotating detail fund. So the answer is no. Based on cost, I did not do that, because I didn't want to come to you trying to get a new car.
Very, very good.
I'm just, so hear, hear me out. I, my, my comment is if we're spending 20,000 on a car that is halfway through its life cycle or more than halfway through its life cycle, on the mileage that we tend to keep a vehicle for, versus spending a bit more, but puts us in a car that is not beyond its mileage life cycle and also in its lowest years of service and maintenance, it, it may be, move us one way or the other. I was just asking the questions about it in that regard.
No, no doubt. And my fear is, and again, I'll, I'll go to the estimated cost portion. We're a one-for-one switch because of the model years. All the equipment that's currently in the Ghost, the Low Pro Lite package, the radar, all that, it, it's just a transfer. So we're $2,500 to do a transfer. I'm not sure going into the new model year that all that equipment is gonna transfer into the new body style, so there may be additional equipment costs there yet. And again, I'm, I'm guesstimating, because I didn't look at that. I do know that the new body style won't take some of our old equipment, so it won't just be a direct, as simple as that.
Okay.
Question.
Go ahead, Select Person Sakosha.
Pull the trigger on the Dover sealed bid.
I'm sorry, say that again?
How long do we have to pull the trigger on the Dover sealed bid for the used Explorer, Chief?
So at, at this point in time, those vehicles are out being stripped. I would anticipate them coming back up in the next few weeks. We don't have a specific date yet, which is why I was getting this in front of everybody, so we could prepare it when it happened.
So could we explore the purchase of a new one? And then obviously keep the secondhand one from Dover in our eyes? So I mean, you know, if it costs 10 grand more to have it for so many more years before we're, we're dumping it off again, I mean, I mean, hand-me-downs are great, but I mean, new stuff is good too, so.
So that would be about 14,000 plus the outfitting of it. And so currently, at this time, we have a first and a second. We would have to repeal those and place those motions aside.
I don't have any sense for anybody else, but.
Are you suggesting, Select Person Sakosha, that we table this and come back with that additional information?
Well, how, how does the board feel on it? I mean, do, do we want to go new? I mean, how, how do we want to do it? I mean, I, I just fear that we're not gonna be able to get something, because I know, I mean, I, I'm a Ford guy, I get it, but, you know, I buy trucks and vans, and, you know, i- it's a scarce market right now, so.
So just for the sake of, for the sake of scope creep on this, so there's two issues here. One of them is the funding mechanism, 14,000 plus additional dollars for outfitting it. And the other part to it is the timeline. Chief Joy, would you like to speak to both of those issues?
Yeah, one timeline, again, I'm not sure when Dover is gonna be prepared for sealed bids. You folks meet again in two weeks. I don't know how long Dover's sealed bid process will be open. I don't know when it's gonna hit sealed bid. So I don't have an answer to the timeline question. This was in preparation for. As far as a new vehicle is concerned, I will absolutely do the research on that, if that is the board's desire. Several issues. We can't order a new one. The order period is closed. I don't even think I could do it if I wanted to. Leftovers this year, if they exist, I don't know when they're going to exist. I know agencies around us that ordered cruisers in the winter slash early spring don't have anticipated deliveries until fall. I don't know that anything ordered at the last minute for cruisers is ever going to hit this year potentially into next year. I'll do the research, I'll look into it, I'll see what's around. I don't think the availability is gonna be tremendous. I do want to reiterate, this is not a replacement for next year's Cruiser. This is to enable me to come to you folks flat, asking for one, instead of asking for two new cruisers next year. Again, it was just a due diligence on my part, looking at the used car. I can absolutely do the homework on the new vehicle. I just question the funding and quite frankly, whether we're even going to be able to get our hands on a new vehicle.
And I'm gonna ask Town Administrator MacGyver to speak to that.
Uh, yeah, so I have big concerns about the funding also. We don't have, we don't have money in this year's budget for a second Cruiser anyways. The chief and deputy chief spent a lot of time putting this proposal together, using alternative funding sources. And I think it's a great suggestion, great utilization of money that's available, but I think that's all of the money that's available. Even if a, a new Cruiser was at our doorstep tomorrow, I think it would be a stretch to the voters to pull from other areas of the budget to buy it. It, and I think like Chief Joy said, using this as an opportunity to come in flat next year or with marginal increases to pursue a new Cruiser next year is what's right for the town and what's right for the residents.
Okay. And then Select Person Air, I see your hand up.
I don't care what the board do. I'll explain my reasoning. I cannot put a vote on this, because it seems like it's all going details. I'm a farmer, plain and simple. We have two cruisers out on detail, spur shift, two for changeover, two for backup in case there's an accident, two, one for the chief. Because I went by Friday night, there's five cruisers at the police station. Went there, sat in one of the other five. And for me, if they can put a Band-Aid for 60,000 miles, it's gonna be replaced. And everything the ABC brought up last year, rotation and mileage and stuff, it, it's gonna be more utilized. That's what they're bringing up. So you will not get my vote on ABC's concerns itself, and this is just a Band-Aid. So we just gotta manage it. My thoughts with ABC came from last year. Is that better?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, or comments before we move to a vote?
I have something to say.
Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. Through all the information that's been given to us and being equally fair with all of the board members and with the chief, I think if it's been stressed that even by some of the board members that even they can't get vehicles and what have you. And if we continue, if, if this motion were to be denied, we'd be looking at that vehicle staying there and waiting for a hope and a prayer that we can get a new one next year. And at the same time, when it starts to increase in the mileage, now we're turning around and jeopardizing the safety of our team that drives them. So that's, that's my comments on, on that.
Okay. I have a first by Select Person Sakosha. I have a second on the motion by Select Person Bailey. Can I ask for a roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Air?
I'll go no on reasons I stated before. I want to repeat my reasons, I can't.
No, I feel comfortable that you clearly stated the, the information. Select Person Bailey, okay?
Napp, aye. Sakosha?
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all.
That's a tough vote.
It was a tough vote, but again, we're not supposed to agree on everything. That's the glorious part of a democracy. And by the way, thank you all for your level of respect for each other as you move through this process. It's really difficult to know who's here and who's trying to speak, because you're little boxes right now on my screen, but thank you all for how you handled that. We're moving on to the conserved land tree stand notice. Do you want to speak to this, Town Administrator MacGyver?
Yes, so it's actually state law, but also town policy that you need landowner permission in order to install any hunting stand or blind permanently, that you're not hauling in and hauling out with you. The Conservation Commission in Barrington, the policy is that the Conservation Commission has to approve it. And then also state law indicates it has to be properly marked with whoever owns it and their address. So the Conservation Commission knows of some stands and blinds out on town property that isn't properly marked and didn't have town permission. They want to post a notice on them, just saying, hey, look, you know, go through the proper channels, get this done right. And so they developed the notice that is attached to my report. This was run through legal, they're perfectly comfortable with it. And so looking for select board support to allow the Conservation Commission or their designees to post this notice to tree stands or blinds they found, find on town property, which was not authorized.
Very good. Are there any questions, concerns, or issues from the select board? Seeing as none, I would make a motion to accept authorizing, I'm sorry, I would make a motion to authorize the placement of the attached notice for stand and blind installations on town property. Is there a second? Select, Select Person Air has seconded that. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Air?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Napp, aye. Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you. Sale of town-owned land. Let me just, there are recommendations. Town Administrator MacGyver, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is just an update, not looking for any action from the board right now. As you know, the board has tasked the Town Lands Committee with developing recommendations for the sale of town-owned properly, property, primarily tax-deeded property, but some others that the town has held for a number of years. They, the Town Lands Committee did an excellent job last year moving some of the property the town owned on Berry River Road and Long Shores Drive. This year, they've developed a list of 16 properties. I have the Excel spreadsheet, the current draft of the Excel spreadsheet linked to my report. I also just brought it up on the screen here. So these are properties that the Town Lands Committee are recommending for sale. They met on Saturday and discussed the recommendations in a little more detail. I'll be bringing those updated recommendations to the board for June 22nd. Essentially, there's going to be three ways that the Lands Committee is recommending transferring these properties. Some of the properties, the Lands Committee is going to recommend that the, it's in the town's best interest that they go to an abutting property owner, if they're interested, with the condition that they be merged, do a lot line adjustment and merge them. This is still focused on those lots on Berry River Road and Long Shores Drive as a way to expand those very small lots out there. If, for the properties that that's the recommendation, the sale would go through that RSA 4114A process with the, it's a eight-week process, input from the Conservation Commission Planning Board, a couple of hearings, and then an opportunity to sell it to the abutter. For the other properties, the two options that the Lands Committee has considered is an auction or sealed bid. And so they will be making that recommendation and finalizing the conditions, the recommended conditions for each property. So for example, you know, the, there's a lot on, on Washington Street that is, the home is rundown and there's a lot of trash there. A condition would be that within six months, the home is removed and the trash is cleaned up. For some of the lots, one of the conditions of sale might be that they be merged into one lot. So, you know, maybe that's the lots on Beauty Hill Road or some of the other lots out there. So they're finalizing that package, bringing it to the board. I wanted to put this in front of the board's eyes. I know Select Person Air has been involved in the process as a member of the Lands Committee, but I know I've heard some interest from other board members on an update, so I just wanted to make sure the whole board had this update. Like I said, I'll be bringing recommendations back to the board on June 22nd to finalize the list in the process. If you have input from what you've reviewed, I'm happy to take that to the Lands Committee or answer any additional questions. Looks like George Bailey has his hand up.
Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, one of my questions of three is what's to prevent the individual to disable the merge in, in the future?
So it could be, we could place a covenant on the deed. And so we, we can do whatever we want, if that's the recommendation, and we would work with our lawyer to make whatever conditions we'd like to place on a property carry forward perpetually.
All right. And if the, the adjoining owner of the other piece of property doesn't want that piece of property, I would suggest, for the next question is that, on some of these items, like one of the pieces of property they have listed here, it says should go with Lot 92, but when we go out for bid, are we going to, or try to make a recommendation to them to say that Lot 92 and Lot whatever, whatever this one number is here, because I don't have it connected properly, but do those two lots should go out as one bid? So that person would get both pieces of property?
Yeah, it's a great question. And so for, and it was kind of two questions. For properties, you were talking about MAP 104, Lot 93. And the recommendation of the Lands Committee right now is that that should really just be tacked on to 92. And the reason is, is because Lot 92 has an access easement over that Lot 93. So it really makes the most sense just to, and, and so for that, that wouldn't go out to bid or be involved in an auction. That would be the Lands Committee, with the blessing of the select board, would approach that property owner and say, hey, we all think it's in the best interest that you take this. We would review what the town is owed in back taxes. Likely for this lot, it isn't a lot, maybe a few hundred dollars, maybe as much as a thousand. And the Lands Committee would work with the property owner to see if they're interested and bring that agreed-upon amount back to the select board for that RSA 41:14-A process. And so that's your one question. To your question about the two lots that we would want to be merged, yes, so we would sell those as a package, and we would list as a condition of the sale that after the owner purchases them, that they be merged together as a condition of the sale. That would be written into the deed. Good question. And I think you had a third question?
And the last one is, when we just talked about those other two lots going together and talking to the adjacent person, what's going to happen with the taxes on those pieces of property? Is, is that person going to be required to, after receiving the, the two lots, would they turn around and be paid at a, at the full value of that? Or are they gonna be in a, are we gonna be able to let them have it for a reduced tax rate?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think I understand it. So there's no reduced tax rate. So if we're talking about specifically that Lot 104, MAP, MAP 104, Lot 93, and MAP 104, Lot 92, if that property owner were to purchase that lot, then it's, a condition of that would be that a lot line adjustment was done, so it was just added to their property. And in that case, the assessed value rises marginally, opposed to them being separate lots, especially if they're two buildable lots. So their, their future tax impact would be minimal if they were merged, because you're, you're taking a standalone lot, which is more valuable, and you're tacking it on as back acres, which is less valuable and isn't taxed as high. I think the second part of your question was about the taxes owed to the town, and if they would be responsible for those once they took ownership. So the town, all of the properties the town owns don't have any taxes due. So as soon as we sell them, nobody owes back taxes. That said, it's good practice for the town to receive at least what is owed to it before, when we, when we had to take it from the previous property owner who didn't pay taxes. It's good practice to make sure that we cover those costs. We don't have to. But for the properties on Berry River Road and Long Shores Drive, like I said, it's typically a few hundred dollars, maybe a thousand, maybe a couple of thousand in a few situations. And so in this specific instance, it could be that the property owner says, or it could be that the Lands Committee says, listen, the town has no business owning this. There's wetlands, there's liability concerns. Even if we have to give it away, the town should transfer this property, start collecting taxes on it, and not be in the business of owning property in town. So I hope that answers your question. Let me know if it didn't.
Certainly did. Thank you very much for your time.
And any other questions, concerns, or comments?
Air?
Go ahead, Select Person Air.
Yes, we had a very good meeting Saturday and stuff. And then I want to recognize the chairman and members of the boards, Land Town Lands- And then I want to recognize the chairman and members of the boards laying town lands. I am not a member, I'm just a liaison, I'm just the messenger. They have personally, and I have personally went up to abutters and notified them that stuff was coming up on the air for FYI and see if they were interested in stuff. And then the chairman went out and posted roughly in the center of properties that are going to be coming up and people will look at it. And then we, we were friendly heads up that the town will be selling these in the future, maybe some interest people showing up. Don't be sad about it. And, but they put a lot of work in and stuff and had really, you have really good feedback of Saturday's meeting on this.
Very good.
Tracy, aye.
Go ahead, select person, Vice Chair now.
So I'm just wondering if we have validated all the addresses and everything because I, I think, I remembered seeing 71 Corbett Road is a house that's listed for sale in Barrington.
Yeah, but it was repurchased, it was taken off the list.
Oh, okay, because I was seeing it on the list and I'm like, I think that one's for sale in town right now. Okay.
So that's a different list than is attached to my report, Andy. I sent that out to you and it would have been in red. It should have been in red in what I sent you because the original list that the Lands Committee sent over included some properties that were tax-deeded last year. And in between when they received their list and when they did their review, some of those properties were purchased back. But yeah, good catch. So the list linked to my report is the up-to-date one. But like I said, I'll be integrating the additional recommendations from the Lands Committee from that meeting on Saturday. And I definitely want to echo Dan's comments that this is, the members of the Lands Committee are doing a terrific service to the town of Barrington, volunteering their time. They've gone out, visited the properties, like Dan said, the chair made signs with the map and lot to post on each one of the properties. It's an excellent group of folks that provides great advice to me as town administrator, but also to the select board.
Yeah, absolutely. Fully agree with that.
Great. So we'll see this issue then come up for a vote on June 22nd, it looks like. Okay, on to Green Hill Bridge Permanent Easement. I know we've all read through the new bridge design and it will require temporary and permanent easements of all four quadrants. Any questions, concerns, or comments before I make a motion on this? No. So I, I would then like to make a motion to authorize permanent easement of MAP 219, Lot 46, related to the construction of a new bridge on Green Hill Road over the Eyes and Glass River.
Second.
So we have a first and a second roll call vote, beginning with select person air, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. The permanent easement has been issued. We're going to move on to the ever-so-riveting select person reports outs and any concerns or questions you folks have, starting with select person Sakosh, it says on my list. Jimmy, you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can now. Yep, great.
I, I do not have anything to add to the board tonight.
Okay, and could I hear from a report out, select person air? You talked about the Town Lands Committee. Thank you for attending that. Any other meetings that you want to report out on?
Yeah, the conservation, um, and there was a couple guests there. I thought they were going to be on tonight, but I guess not. There's a recommendation letter for both the committee on the gun in town and stuff. Jack Bingham and Matt Town. And then we talked about conservation stuff and business. And then I need to add, I need to talk to, I have respect everyone to get out, enjoying all the trails and stuff. There are parking rules in this town, the state and town. They're not enforced, but someone parks on the roads up, they could get a ticket. The town sort of safely, but it could happen. And then the Town Lands Committee, we had a real good meeting. You know, get a lot of information on the breakdown on every property, we discussed it and stuff. They put a lot of effort in, as the PA said. And then school board, I haven't, I haven't attended, I don't keep an eye on it. I didn't see it happen and stuff and there was a resolve, so that's all I got to say about it.
Okay.
Oh, Jim, sorry, I muted you because you're making some background noise. Sorry.
Anything else, select person air, before I move to select person Bailey?
Tracy.
Select, select person Sakosh, go ahead.
Sorry, I got confused with what you said first off.
So this is like your rec commission and your planning board reporter?
That's what I'm getting going here. It just confused me. Sorry, new to the lingo. So the rec commission is going forward, there, obviously they canceled summer camp. That was a very tough decision that they had to make. But with the guidelines and what we have to go by, that's what we have to do. We actually have a meeting tomorrow at 5:00 AM, or not 5:00 AM, but 5:00 PM to discuss the budgets and whatnot, and we're going forth with Carino as far as we know.
Excellent. Okay, and any, anything? I know that, I think you and select person Nap attend Planning Board.
I'm the backup for Andy when he's not available, but.
Oh, okay, so I'll let, I'll let. Select person Bailey, report out, please.
All right, thank you very much. The CBA had four cases come before it. Three cases were approved, ones continued to the next meeting. The other concern is the library trustees and the library had a meeting that included the trustees, building committee, and the fundraising groups. And prior to this meeting, the library trustees went out and asked, I believe it's CMP to their architect to come forward and look at how they could do an addition onto the current building. And they went forward and looked at it and during the, so with that committee there, then they went to the meeting they had on June 2nd with everyone. And some of the topics there were, is it what we want to have? Is this how it's going to be? In essence, what they were going to do, they reduced the cost to $1.983 million and they were just going to put a single structure to come out the other end. But with the trustees and the building committee members and with the fundraising groups, they, they had a very heated discussion and what have you. And one of the things that came up was the half a million dollars that they still say that they have raised. But in reality, as I was re-informed again this, this afternoon, is only about $240,000 sitting there. And so the library trustees and all the other committee, the library trustees are going to meet at the next meeting and they're going to make a decision on what they're going to present to the taxpayers. Are they going to present the 1.9? Or are they going to turn around and figure out a way to modify the other plan they have before us? SMP has been tasked with looking how to modify the original plan and maybe reduce it. But I must say that there was a lot of discussion on not to reduce the cost. And then the other group, other individuals came up and said, you know, we have the COVID-19 situation here, we have people that have less money. We have people that are going to be looking at the taxes, the registration. Everything came up as to what they were going to have to pay the town. And so that's how that went. And then the very final thing they did to me was, they asked me why the board turned around and made the changes to our, our goals. And I explained to, I pointed out to them that we have to work at the town hall. The town hall went, became our number one priority. And then two, we went to, we left safer roads there with the help of the staff and the taxpayers. You know, it's going to be a help for everybody. And then in the thing, we still included the library as our third goal that we had there. So it was quite a heated concern. Trustees held off without being forced to do a meeting, or not a meeting, but a, a decision. So they're going to have another meeting coming up, I believe, 26th. I'm, I have to look at that right here. It would be the, the 16th. So they're going to be meeting on the 16th. Excuse me for looking at that, Madam Chair, but that's how it's going to be. But all in all, I feel that they have a, a big thing to look at because they don't want to lose that $241,000. And again, I can't tell you which way they would go. I really can't. So we were just going to have to wait for that meeting and see. But they are listening to the voters, but they're also listening to the donors. So they, they, they're in a quadrant, they're going to figure it out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, select person Bailey. Select person Nap, are you on here for a report out?
I am. Sorry to cut you off, Andy. I just wanted to chime in, hearing from George that the trustees plan to make a decision on a direction to move forward at their next meeting. And considering that the select board did set as one of their goals to work collaboratively with the trustees to develop a new library proposal, which will receive voter support. I didn't know if the board wanted to send any information to the trustees in, to support their effort for making a decision. I'm not asking to put anybody on the spot, but hearing that they're going to be making a decision in eight days on what they're going to bring forward to voters, I think now is an opportunity for the select board to send any recommendation to work collaboratively.
Sure. So we, I, I think that we, we've talked about a variety of things. I know that we have seen a lot of support somewhere. And again, this was before COVID, but we've seen a lot of verbalized support for a library that comes in somewhere around $2.5 million, if that can be accomplished. Go, go ahead, select person air. I see you also have a comment.
I've heard bits and pieces too. I don't know exactly what they want to do, so I would need more. I was, I missed it. What exactly they want to do for support? So that, we get a better idea what they want to do?
Yeah. I, I'm excited that they're, they're really listening to the town residents and looking at all the options. I think that that's an excellent approach. Select person Bailey, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. I mean, the, that figure that you noted was brought up and the, they're looking at it. And then, of course, they brought up the fact that way back when, when they originally started, they said not to turn around and go for the building that they're in now. Turn around and wait and go before the voters, but they went with a Butler built. And they said, you see, we're stuck with it all these years. And there was a person they mentioned had resigned. So there's a lot of good, solid information being put up. But then again, there's some shenanigans that I'm not aware of, but you can feel it when you listen to it. So this meeting coming up is going to be there. And I would encourage anybody, if you have comments, if you want to send them directly on to the chair, that's fine. But if you would please just CC myself, so I can be aware of what they are and so I don't get caught flat-footed with them, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, ideas from the select board in reference to this?
Andy has his hand up.
Oh, Andy, I can't see you. Sorry, you're just a circle AK right now. So please, Vice Chair Nap.
Okay, so I had two questions with it. The first, the, or the, one's a comment, one's a question. The first one is, I'm happy to see that they're looking at alternative proposals.
Yep.
That I have, and it's a question George can probably elaborate on, is if they end up not with the design build that they had, does that have to return the funds to the people who donated money within their expectation of a certain project aspect out of it?
No. On your latter, your second question, that was also brought up and the groups that were responsible for gathering the donations, they, in the process of gathering the donations, the individuals that donated or pledged were guaranteed that they would go before the voters three times. So going before, the voters have already seen it twice. And so what they're looking at is several members of the other group, and I failed to write their names down, but they're going to be contacting the donors and ask them how they feel about just doing a renovation versus having a new building. And that's going to be some of the information they're going to pass out. But during that same information, there was, like I said, this, it's two-sided right there with the way the people are believing. And there was a strong push to continue with the original plan from SMP but with a few minor changes to try to at least bring the, bring the price down to numerous millions of dollars. It started at 2.5 and went all the way up to 3.8. So it, it, there was somewhere in the middle of all of that, that they were going to come back to it.
Okay, any, any other, go ahead, select Vice Chair Nap.
Yep, I was just, I don't, I don't know what point you would like to open this, open it up. But based on my question, Lindsay sent me a note just saying she's on the call and if we, or she could address some of it.
Oh, that, does everyone agree that, that that's a wise idea? I personally think it is.
I think it is also. I think so too.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
As everybody in the board is aware of, you know, I, I support the library. But, you know, it's, but that, that's enough said. I, I would turn it over to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Hey, team, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's so interesting. I feel like I'm on outer space talking to you because I'm on my phone. I can't see any of you. But I do want to just say quickly, thank you so much for having the opportunity to be able to call into these meetings. You guys all know that a lot of us struggle to come out to the meetings and this is a really cool way to participate. You know, I can lay in bed with my kiddos, but still pay attention and be on the call. So very cool. Yeah, I'm very excited about it. So in terms of the library project, we are very sensitive to the fact that we are obviously dealing with a pandemic and we are unsure of what tomorrow brings, right? So as George said, we did hold a meeting that we posted publicly with SMP. And invited to that, George was correct, it was the trustees. It was also the building committee, which involves some residents in town. It was also the foundation, that fundraising arm, as well as the staff. The staff was at that as well. So there was quite a few of us on the call. The SMP folks were able to give us a drawing of what a potential renovation addition would look like. Coming in, I think that, and this is very loose because we don't know costs yet. But the one that was proposed would about double our size. And there were lots of positives and there were lots of negatives. As George said, these kinds of decisions are really tricky to make. And so some folks come at it with a donor mind and some folks come at it in a different mind. But we were able to really break down the needs. And the building that he was able to show us, he was guessing would be around a $1.5 million bond if we could continue to keep our donors at. And you know, yes, we do have pledged 4.5, correct. We have 241 in the bank last February. But pledges are still coming in. Obviously, I would say there's no new pledges coming in, but the pledges are being met. So with that said, we do want to do our due diligence and look at every single aspect we can. We've heard from our town, two years in a row, that the project, that the project that we had presented, you know, wasn't going to work. We hear you. The cost is too high. So now we're looking at this renovation addition. There were lots of negative comments. And there were, there were quite a few positives. And now we're looking at what could this third option be? Where it would be a new build and with a new build comes access to grants. Would a new build but at a extreme less cost? We're talking, you know, at least under three, we would never, we couldn't even look at anything over three at this point. We're extremely sensitive to the fact that we are dealing with new times right now. And we wouldn't want to put too much on the taxpayers. What we thought was adequate in the last two years, we heard was not, and we get that. So now trying to come up with an idea, this is our third year coming. Unfortunately, there was a little miscommunication there, but at our next June meeting, there will be absolutely no decisions made. Because the architect and myself need to work on what that third choice might look like, right? A brand new building, but you know, half of the size that we were proposing, say, we were proposing a 13,000 square foot building, then maybe we're looking at a nine square thou, you know, square. You can figure out what I'm trying to say. Sorry. But a much smaller, so a much cheaper, but a new building with more parking, ADA compliant, etc. So we still have to look at that option. And we are in no business of making any decisions without your assistance as a select board, without our town. We've obviously gotten the message the last two years, and I feel like I'm really excited that our foundation and our trustees are really working to listen to our community and try to just make it the best we can. You know, like you're all talking about police cruisers and Band-Aids and all that. But sometimes that is that sometimes it's it's a Band-Aid is what needs to happen for a while. So we're going to do our best to make it the best it can be. And yeah, we're happy to share all of that. That entire meeting was recorded and is on our website as minutes. So the whole Zoom meeting was recorded. If any of you want to look at that, that is there for public knowledge. You can all take a peek.
Excellent. Thank you, Lindsay. That's
That was a lot of information. Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. And in the meantime, the library is semi-open. I don't know if all of you have known. We are at a where the the staff just came into the building in a very, very varied schedule. Because as you know, our our space, like the town hall is, is difficult to actually meet the requirements to be in there. So we've been working with the state task forces and working with the guidelines that have been coming down from the state on to how to then open next phase would be curbside pickup. I'm super proud of our staff and the trustees because they have been able to resume all their programs digitally. So yeah, that's really what I have to add.
Awesome. Thank you, Lindsay. My report out for the transfer station group that met today is that the new recycling flyer that will be sent to or handed out, we're not quite sure yet, but created for Barrington residents explaining more specifically what causes recycling contamination and what doesn't. That will be prepared and reviewed at the next meeting and then the committee members will weigh in on that. And I think that's about what we covered in that hour long meeting. Select Person Nap, did you have something?
I was just holding up the the flyer that
Oh, yes. Yeah.
I saved it to my phone. Reference it as needed.
Yeah. So one of the big things I'll just share with everyone quickly. Glass is not all glass. It's, you know, your beer bottles, your pickle jars, things like that. Do not send your household glasses or your Correllware that you no longer want and put that in with the glass that contaminates it. Do not use the paper plates you use at a picnic. Do not sort those out, think they're clean enough and put them in recycling. Absolutely not. No paper plates like that. We don't want your tissues. We don't want your used napkins in there. The more we use recycling appropriately, the more money we save. And Aaron has done a great job in giving examples of that. So the committee will finish up with that flyer and hopefully continue to educate people about what they can do to both save our planet by recycling and also to continue to keep costs down on recycling by not putting contaminants in. That's about all I had. I'm going to move to the second portion of public comment.
No, no.
I'm sorry. What else?
You've keep you. I'm beginning to take this personally here. You keep neglecting me. What about my report?
Oh, I'm sorry. I crushed your name up like you spoke. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Vice Chair Nap.
All right, the planning board had their meeting on June 2. A there was a there's a request for a 43 commercial office storage unit that actually was pushed out. So that's going to come back before the board at a later point in time. There was a review of the Barrington Shores Campground expansion of 28 seasonal campsites. There actually will be a site walk tomorrow evening at 5:30 at the Barrington Shores Campground. There was also a review of the welding and fabrication shop, approval of that on Colonial Way. And then there was a lot line subdivision for a site on Caliph Highway, which was approved. The other piece that came up that we voted on earlier was the the Class 6, the building permit for the Class 6 road. One of the things that the board discussed requesting having the fire department do a dry run on Long Shore Road before they issued the permit and also to have the fire chief, the police chief and the highway department heads review Class 6 and private roads before sending their review to the planning board. At which the planning board specifically asked that we ask these department heads to do that. So it just helps make their job and the and the review easier there because they do all of it for us, but not necessarily for the planning board.
Gotcha. Okay.
So does by consensus, does everybody support having each of these departments do their review before and before the planning board sees the application for it?
Town Administrator MacGyver, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, one quick thing, George, if you see on that bar in the middle of your screen, the rectangle with an X on the bottom, just hit that button. Right next to the right of your microphone. To the left of the three dots. Yeah, just click that.
There you go.
Okay, thanks. So yes, I I think that's a perfectly reasonable request. The only thing that I would ask is that right now these the Classics and Private Road agreements are on a pretty long time schedule. Because it has to go to the planning board, then to the select board, and those schedules stretch out a number of weeks. So I think if if something comes in and the fire chief, police chief and road agent don't have an opportunity to review it before the next planning board meeting, and that could could push a building permit application for a deck out, you know, month or so to get the meetings to line up. I would hope that there's some flexibility for staff to use judgment and say, hey, we'll get the planning board what we can, but we don't want, it's unreasonable to have this property owner wait another month to try to get that. I think John Huckins might be able to elaborate. He's more familiar with the timing of it. And I see that Chief Walker raised his hand also, probably about the dry run the planning board requested.
Okay, so let's start with John Huckins, please. John, you're on mute. You'll need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, I'm off mute now. Okay, my my take on this by reading 67441 is the planning board should be weighing in the same as the fire chief, the police chief, the road agent, because they're supposed to give you anything they know that you would need for information to make your decision. For them to get all that information and then make a decision.
Lindsay Mazzia is now exiting.
Yeah. So so as I'm understanding it, your interpretation is the order in which we're currently conducting this is appropriate.
Yeah, I know. I think it's appropriate, but I think they're supposed to give you anything they know to help you in making your decision, the same as the other department heads. It's they almost are acting like they're supposed to make the decision and you're supposed to do what they say, but it's your policy, not theirs.
Understood. Okay, could we hear from Chief Walker?
Yeah, I'm just looking for clarification on what they're talking about a dry run on the fire department.
It was it was in reference to Long Shore Road and you being able to get trucks. Does somebody have two microphones going?
I just muted Chief Walker.
Okay, it was in reference to Long Shore Road and there was, I believe, a lot is being developed down toward the end of it, and they were looking at making sure that the fire department was comfortable getting vehicle, getting a vehicle all the way down to the end of that road.
Okay, so Chief Walker, I'm not sure you need to even speak to this. I I'm of the opinion that you would never approve anything as far as a building permit without knowing that you can service a location. Unless you have something else you would like to share with us, Chief Walker.
I just so you know, the comment I think that came up from the planning board end was was the concern of the condition of the road because the road does tend to get pretty, pretty abused at times.
Chief Walker?
He's on mute.
He's on mute. So again, that the condition of the road and the whether how it's taken care or isn't taken care of. Unfortunately, the town doesn't have any teeth to necessarily force somebody to make the repairs. That's an association that takes care of that road. And two, I would personally struggle to say that I, you know, if somebody's trying to put an addition on or or construct on property they own, they're paying taxes on. I would I'd have a problem with saying you can't build down there because the road's not up to a particular standard. We've never ever not gone down that road. Yes, absolutely. There there are a number of roads in town that are better than at certain times of the year than the others. But again, from a fire emergency services standpoint, we make every effort to get wherever the people meet us.
Excellent. Okay.
I will provide to the planning board.
Okay, thank you, Chief Walker. I'm going to do, we're going to move to public comment, but I wanted to let you all know on the select board, I did because, you know, studying labor is important to me. I did a quick study based on some average rates of pay and the amount of time that you all spend in your volunteer elect roles. And I will tell you that each year you contribute about $50,000 in free oversight as volunteer elected officials on the select board. And so I personally just want to say thank you. I know we spend a lot of time reviewing material before meeting minutes and it's in service to our town. So thank you all. I know we're going to public comment. I did see Select Person Air's hand up for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, up to a total of 15 minutes. What I would like to do is if you would like to speak after Select Person Air speaks as a resident, please send a quick chat or click on, is there a hands up button somewhere in front of you? So if you mouse over and click on your little, your hands up button, we'll make sure that Town Administrator MacGyver alerts us that you're ready to speak. Go ahead, Dan Air.
This is my thoughts, my feelings and stuff. I've talked to elders and stuff. Went through the depression and stuff. And they had to pick up coal on the side of the road to heat their house and stuff. Life is changing. And the future is uncertain, is up. And all this stuff going on, this virus and stuff, and people, we like to think social distancing, our way of life in the past is going to be different. And we got to react to it. I'm sorry to hear about the incident with the guy in police officers, but all these protests and stuff going on and stuff, they're turning into riots. We gotta respect each other and stuff. We shouldn't be doing stuff like that in this area. I understand the concern and stuff, and I agree. And now the law is taking care of them officers. But to have these big stages, events and stuff, will not help the situation at all. And we could spread the virus more, we don't know. And I just ask one to be patient and let life take its course and deal with the adjustments. Because time heals all wounds and life will take its course.
Okay. Okay, any other public comments? Town Administrator MacGyver, did anyone chat to you with a little notification that they'd like to be given time to speak?
No. If any, if you're on the phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Or if you're participating on the computer, you can press the microphone icon, which is just to the right of your camera icon in order to unmute your microphone and offer any public comment.
And I'm going to give that 30 seconds as well, so that anyone not familiar with using an online meeting format, they can reach out.
During that, I'd like to say, hey, thanks to everybody for doing well through these times, both fire, police, town administration, all that. Great job. Keep it up.
Been an interesting time. I'm glad we've kept the number of cases of this virus to to a minimum for a large, large community. So that's all I have. I think we had to, do we have a non-public?
Yes.
Okay, and that was for purposes of?
An abatement request for interest in penalties on a late property tax bill.
Okay, so for purposes of reputation, then we would be moving to a non-public session. And do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Okay, and I saw Sakoshia, Select Person Sakoshia's hand go up. So I have a first and a second roll call vote to go into non-public for purposes of reputation.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Nap, I.
Sakoshia.
And Hardikoff, I. I'll meet you all in the non-public session. Will we have anything to report out after that, Town Administrator MacGyver?
There'll be no information to share with the public, but we will come back to this meeting in order to seal the minutes and adjourn.
Okay, so folks, in your emails, there should be a virtual non-public session to enter to discuss reputation.
Yeah, George Joy.
Is now exiting.
Hey friend.
Yep.
Now you're muted.
Okay. And
You're still muted.
I see George, I see me.
I can't hear you. Wait, I can't hear you. Oh no, I'm muted.
And Andy.
My speakers are muted. My bad. Sorry Tiffany.
Motion to adjourn.
I still can't hear you though, because it's still muted.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
So motion to adjourn the select board meeting of June 8th at 9:03 PM.
So I don't think that we need to seal the minutes. So Tiffany, just make an abatement, a request was approved at the bottom of the minutes. And yes, that was a, a motion to adjourn by select person Hardikoff.
Second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you all.